March 29th. It's called to order, we have our invocation for Reverend Shannon Webster, Senior Pastor of First Presbyterian Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Counselor Kim Rafferty from District Two. Please stand.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Oh God of grace, you are the Lord of our lives and we ask your presence and blessing on this council and its meeting today. Where our minds are closed, open them, where our hearts are narrow, make them wide. Where our arms and spirits are tired, renew us, and where we hesitate, give us courage and open us all, who are here today, to greater purpose. Loving God bless this city of Birmingham, increase all that is best about us and forgive us where we fall short. Guide those who direct affairs of this city. Sustain them in their work, strengthen them in their resolve to seek and pursue the well-being of all the people. And give them joy in their service. Bless our common life and give us sound government and just laws. Simplicity and justice in our relations with one another in a spirit of service to all. Who call us to live in community. And teach us to care for one another. Inspire this council with a vision of the community as it might be. Where the love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out anxiety and fear. Help us all to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding to serve the common good. To serve those in trouble and despair. So for this council, for our mayor and our elected leaders, our employed workers and for our city, we pray, guide those who frame our laws and shape our common life. Those who keep the peace, those who administer justice. Guide those who teach and heal and serve. And we pray for those in the most need in our city. The poor for whom life is often a bitter struggle and those who have no place to call home. Those whose lives are clouded by death or loss, by pain or disability, by discouragement or fear. Increase our service so their story can have a more glorious ending. And the life of our city, your kingdom come, oh Lord, your will be done. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundee. Councilmember Parker. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Skiles. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present, morning.
Morning.
The minutes. Do we have a motion from January 19th through January 12th and 19th to 2016?
I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson.
Okay, voting should be open. Two, four, five. Councilmember Tyson, President Austin.
Yes. A vote yes.
Yes, yes. That's it, vote should be up.
Alright, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, the minutes are not ready from January 26th through March 22nd, let's go with the consent agenda.
Alright. Consent agenda starts on page two. Items one, two, three, and four are on consent. Page three. Items five, six, seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Page four. Please remove item 10 from the consent agenda. And items 11 and 12 and 13 are on consent, that's the items 11, 12, and 13. Page five. Item 14, 15, items 14, 15, and 16 are on consent, 16 was added to the consent agenda. Page six. Please remove item 17 from the consent agenda. And items 18, 20, and 21 are on consent, 18 was added to the consent agenda. Page seven. Items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 are on consent. Page eight. Items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 are on consent. Page nine. Items 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 are on consent. And we skip over to page 11, item 39 was added to the consent agenda. And on page 12, I'm sorry, page 12, items 41 and 42 were added to the consent agenda. And on page 13, item 45 was added to the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have any members of the council wish to add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Any members of...
Yeah?
Any members of the... Any members of the public wish to speak to an item? Excuse me, that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. We have a mover and a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson.
Okay, voting should be open now.
Martin, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know.
Council Tyson?
No.
Consent agenda. Okay, thank you. That vote should be up.
Alright, the consent agenda passes. If you're... If there are any members in the audience who had an item that was placed on the consent agenda? Your item has passed. You can leave the chambers if you like, or you can stay with us for the remainder of the meeting. Camille, you don't have to stay. Alright. Let's see. Item 10, Mr. Clerk.
Which one?
10.
Okay. Item 10. A resolution relative to the application of Charles Smith Jr. and Eddie Campbell Jr. For a towing and vehicle immobilization service license to be used at Big Edge Wrecker and storage, 9/20/14, Placed Southwest Birmingham, to operate one wrecker on the streets of Birmingham in a hearing of all interested parties. And this should read, "No recommendation by Public Safety."
No recommendation. Alright, we have a mover and a second. President, like to do the item?
I think there was a request for a delay on that item.
Okay.
At least missed.
Second.
Mentioned that, right.
Roberson, Austin, alright, let's move for a one-week delay. Second. Austin, Roberson.
Okay, Austin, Roberson. That's for both?
Yes.
Okay. Then we got one week.
It was Roberson, Austin on getting before us, and then Austin, Roberson on the delay.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, voting should be open for one week.
Mine's still not working, but yes.
Okay. You want to check his out? That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
It should be item seventeen.
Item seventeen, yes.
Item seventeen. A resolution approving the agreement with the Birmingham Business Alliance, Birmingham, in an amount not to exceed $137,975 a year, renewable annually, subject to the availability of funding for a term not to exceed five years to increase and improve the city of Birmingham economic... Economics, I guess, through the promotion of economic development and business prosperity and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Move the item?
Mr... Oh, second.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about this, the contract that was attached to this item says that we're going to pay them quarterly. And, you know, the year is almost over. Have we been paying them quarterly, or are we going to have a, you know, catch-up payment? And is it safe to assume that they've been working on our behalf all year even though we haven't paid them? Have they done anything for us? Is anybody, like, gonna answer?
I will say, I don't have an answer to that. Mr. Barnett, you have an answer on that? As far as the payment? Okay, there's. Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Councilors, Lisa Cooper, Economic Development. I have Rick Davis here from the Birmingham Business Alliance who could address your questions this morning regarding their contract with the city.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, ma'am.
Well, our contract says we're gonna pay you quarterly. Have we been paying you quarterly?
No, ma'am, not until the contract is actually approved and executed by the mayor. Until that time, we will not invoice the city for the quarterly payments.
Well, okay, then the other question is, like, for probably the administration, we're more than half through our year and we're just now getting our contract that says we're gonna pay them quarterly. Have y'all been doing anything for us?
Yes, ma'am, we have. We perform as though the contract, we knew the contract was...
As if we were gonna pay you.
We knew the money was in the budget and it was a matter of just getting the contract formalized and executed. So, yes, ma'am, we have been doing what we stipulate in the contract, yes, ma'am.
So is this like a different contract from all the other years that we've had it?
Same as it's always been, yes, ma'am.
So what is our problem? Who's in charge of contracts? Because this just seems very odd to me that we were dealing with the Birmingham Business Alliance. We have a contract every year with them, but we're more than half through our year and we're just now getting around to it. So...
So I can't answer you what the problem is, but I don't know if I had to go back through the legal department, is it a routine item? I don't know, I can check for you. And if they perform services and we sign the contract tomorrow, then that means they're gonna bill us for that, for those periods of time.
Yeah, I would just think we could do better in the future.
We'll look into it.
Since the past is past, but if we're gonna have a contract with somebody who have a contract with every single year, we could have it ready at the beginning of the year instead of when the year's almost done.
Your point is well made.
Thank you.
What do they do? And do we get reports on what they do? And who measured their results?
Yes, you, Counselor, you do get reports, we submit reports quarterly and also, and on an annual basis. The annual report is submitted on a calendar year basis. And we, there's a little bit of a lag time on that while we get the results compiled. They have to reflect the same results the state of Alabama reports. And so that process is just now complete and that'll be forthcoming with the quarterly report from the city's fiscal third quarter, which is due next two weeks.
So are y'all doing a good job? And who measured y'all's results on, you know?
Our results are measured by a system of metrics. We have 15 different metric areas that we've, our executive committee has approved as our measurement tools. And we follow those metrics and they typically tend to lean toward how we do with other peer communities that are, what we think are the same kind of communities that we would typically compete against for projects. And those are people, are communities like Louisville, Memphis, Austin, Charlotte, Atlanta, the four major metropolitan areas in Alabama. So all of those are in metrics and they're in those reports that we submit.
Yeah, because that's the reports that, where y'all bringing businesses into Birmingham? Do y'all bring business into the inner city like Tittysville and West End and Potley?
Well, we don't...
I've never seen anything like that.
We don't determine where the companies locate, that's up to them, that's a market-driven process. But certainly, we've had companies that have looked at downtown Birmingham and the central area, the central business district as well.
So is it any way y'all can try to research and find some to come into the inner-city areas? Have anyone ever asked you to do that?
Yeah, absolutely, and we do that on a regular basis.
Can I have a report on the ones y'all asked to come in?
Absolutely.
And have a meeting with you? I really appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor, thank you.
Mr. Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. President, with Counsel Tyson, District Seven, has benefited tremendously due to efforts of the BBA with Oxford Pharmaceuticals. We've also had, what's the company that's, Evonix? Which is in District Seven. So that's some of the due diligence of the Birmingham Business Alliance and their efforts in recruiting global businesses and also businesses that were located within the country to come to the city of Birmingham. To my understanding, this contract, Mr. Davis and Ms. Cooper's, is a renewal. There's some other boards and agencies, I know throughout the city, that give financial support to BBA to assist with recruiting of economic development opportunities for the region. So this is the city's just renewal of this contract, five-year deal to make, keep that effort moving forward.
Yes, sir.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, this began with Blueprint years ago, Birmingham.
That is correct.
Then it kind of evolved into the Birmingham Business Alliance's response.
Blueprint Birmingham was officially unveiled in 2011.
Right.
Or actually, we began to implement it in 2011. That was a five-year plan and we have since, what I would call renovated or tweaked the plan.
Right.
And it's now called Blueprint 2020.
Twenty, okay.
And that is the next five years forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Thank you, Mr. President.
Could you wait one minute? And I know District Seven is, they have a big industrial part of their district and it's vibrant where a lot of money is at. And District Six is poverty level, low income. So I would like to have a meeting with you on
Absolutely.
Businesses coming into my area.
Alright. I have a question for the Law Department. We were, we had a contract that was before us a few weeks ago that we were told, I'm trying to remember the contract now. But we were told that we couldn't have a multi-year contract. Ms. Keh, do you remember what that was?
I do not, but I do remember the issue surrounding that.
Was it Master Solution?
Could have been, I know for sure that ADAB was in question under that same theory that we couldn't do a multi-year, but it was based on the funding mechanism in which we put in place. That if the funding expired...
Oh, it was, it was ADA, yes. It was for that, we wanted to have a multi-year contract with ADA, but they told us that we couldn't do it. So we had to change it from the DAS to make it one year. What's different in this one?
There, there's a restriction, I know with the state bid law, for example, for competitive bid contracts cannot be more than three years. I'm not, I'm not aware of any restriction limits any contract to one year.
That's not what, it wasn't competitive bid, it was a contract to provide services similar to what we are looking at with the BBA. And we were told that we couldn't have a multi-year contract. And you all told us that we had to change it from, I think it was two years, to just ending this fiscal year. So there was not a competitive bid contract, so what's the difference?
It was a, if I may, Mr. President, it was a code citing stated by Attorney Roberts.
I know.
Yes.
Do you remember what code he cited?
I could look it up.
Mr. Roberts.
He's mentioning a city ordinance that references contracts for goods being limited one year and services for three years, but it sounds like you're describing a service contract to me.
It was just like this contract, it was very similar.
Be, under the city ordinance would be three years.
Yeah, well, this one was for two and you all told us we couldn't do it for more than one year. So we had to change it from the DAS
Okay.
to one year. This one before us is a five-year contract. So again, what is the difference?
I would have to look at, I'm not familiar with either of those contracts. And frankly, if our city ordinance provides for that limitation, I think we ought to look at repealing the ordinance because state law gives us a lot more latitude than that. The Mayor Council Act has a five-year limitation on contracts where you have to have an appropriation each year. And I would suggest we ought to revise our ordinance to be consistent with that.
That doesn't, that does not make sense to me. What, you told us it was a, it was a two-year contract that was before us to provide very similar services to this contract, except for on the international. And we were told that it could only be, it could not be a multi-year contract. It sat right there and said it. And I think we need to go back and look at the, to see exactly what the issue was and what they said to us before we move forward with this. Counsel Rafferty?
Yeah, the first thing I wanted to ask was, I understand the focus of the BBA is on large corporate type of development. So we do have a hole in our economic development plan for the city of Birmingham when it comes to small business or smaller business. Because the focus of the BBA is regional expansion. And you've done a good job with that. I don't have the contract before me here in this packet, I didn't see it. I might have missed it. But I was curious, is the definition pertaining to the city, promotion of economic development and business prosperity? So exactly specifically, what types of businesses are you looking, are you working with the city on the industrial side, on the large corporate side?
Yes, ma'am, all of those.
Because for...
Yes, ma'am.
All of it, that includes small business?
Absolutely.
So you're gonna change the way that you're operating at the BBA to focus more on down to the small stuff?
Well, we, we have a, we have a vice president for small and minority business development who is focused on that very area. And we have a lot of programs that are tied to that very area. We don't really think there's anything such as a small project, if they create jobs, they're all good.
Every time that I have spoken to the BBA, especially concerning the development of our retail districts, it has been clearly indicated to me that the focus of BBA is large corporate entities, not on the small retail district.
It is true that we do not recruit retail, but we certainly assist and enhance the abilities of retail businesses to grow. We don't go out and recruit retail because those jobs frankly are not stable jobs and they don't pay as well as industrial jobs do. And we're trying to find better paying jobs for the entire community.
But the city is desperate for retail opportunity and development within our borders so that our constituents don't have to leave the city of Birmingham to go to grocery stores or clothing stores or bookstores or other types of businesses that do operate in a retail district.
If you are successful in recruiting a large number of jobs, then those jobs will drive the location of retail amenities. So the more jobs you can recruit to your community, the better off you are as a community because that will tend to drive retail.
And do we have a plan for that?
We have a plan to recruit jobs, yes, ma'am.
No, actually, I was deferring to, I'm sorry, Ms. Cooper. I'm trying to find the meld between the two. Again, to the promotion of economic development and business prosperity. Okay, how are, how are the two departments working?
Well, let me, let me just add to that, a lot of the times, some of the projects that you see before the council for approval with regards to incentives, they're the smaller type of businesses that the BBA oftentimes assists us with that you don't specifically know that has been referred to them. Their main focus is the large industrial corporate entities. But we do constantly, as you know, there are two items on the council agenda today, TJ Tower, Central City, that again, it is a multi, multi-organization entities, various entities come together to bring those smaller type businesses that you're referencing to. As a matter of fact, one in your district that you're familiar with that we're working on, on Parkway East, we initially got that call two years ago from someone at the BBA. And I'm, you know, I'm not as privileged to talk about it specifically, but they are moving forward with occupying that former empty building on Parkway.
The one that we discussed?
Yes.
Okay. So one last question, Attorney Stanley. Usually in these summations, and again, I'm not, I don't have the contract here before me, there is a language that says as funding is available, when it's a multi-year contract? Is that in the contract itself, looking at the argument concerning that this is a five-year contract? Usually there's that little catchphrase, but I didn't see it in the summation and I'm wondering if it's in the language of the contract, which would then resolve the issue concerning a one-year versus five-year contract? Or at least address a portion of it. It doesn't clear up the ordinance. Every good question, you should know the answer before you ask it.
You're referring to what we call a non-appropriation clause. I don't see that, again, I didn't prepare this contract, today's the first day I'm seeing it. I don't see that in this contract. That would be, it's advisable for service contracts that extend for multiple years.
Okay, thank you, then may I make a motion? That we delay this for one week to correct that language and get some clarity on the ordinance?
Second.
Mr. Nichols?
If I could maybe try to clear this up, on page seven of the contract, paragraph 19, the contract is only for one year. The resolution was written by us in the event that the contract is modified for subsequent years. If funds are available, if they're approved in the budget for future years, then the contract will be modified to add another year. We've already got the resolution. To make sure that you all are not approving a blank check, we put that it cannot exceed $137,975 this year or for any of the future four years that the contract may go. But it will only extend one year at a time for no more than $137,975. If funds are available, that's why this says what it says in the resolution. And that's why it says it the way it says it. There's a lot of ifs.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Nichols. We have a mover and a second, rate a vote, Mr. Clerk, on a one-week delay. That item passes for a one-week delay. Next item.
Thank you.
Next item should be number 19.
Item 19, a resolution requesting the mayor authorize the Department of Traffic Engineering to erect a sign on Cleveland Avenue Southwest, 35211, in honor of Pastor Reverend Dr. Gregor Clark with 25-plus years of service to the people in the western area of Birmingham, Alabama.
Alright, we have a mover and a second? Move the item?
Second.
Counsel Tyson, you have a report or you have anything? You said it's already come through your committee.
It's already came through the...
So it doesn't have a recommend, we need to make sure that it says. Country mic on.
It was a, it was a move out of our committee with a yes recommendation, and this is the mayor's one approval for his signs for the year.
Okay. So we just need to make sure, Mr. Clerk, that the item 19 reflects that it was recommended by public improvement as well. Alright, we're ready to vote. That item passes, next item?
Item 37.
Item 37, call up item 37, 38. Forty. Yeah, 37, 38, and 40.
Item 37, a resolution approving the following, Mr. Counsel, James Roberson, Counsel, Pro Tem, City Counsel, Atlanta, Georgia, $321.50 February 17th and 18th, 2016, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting, James Roberson, Counsel, City Counsel, Washington DC, $3,156.12 March 6th through the 10th, 2016, to attend National League of Cities, 2016. Sheila Tyson, Counsel, City Counsel, Washington DC, New Brunswick, New Jersey, $1,089.19 October 7th through the 11th, 2015, to attend National Coalition on Black Civic Participation. Spirit of Democracy and Noble Women, Sheila Tyson, Counsel, City Counsel, Washington DC, $1,753.09, March 6th through the 9th, 2016, to attend National League of Cities, 2016. Sheila Tyson, Counsel, City Counsel, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, $1,300.63 March 9th through the 13th, 2015, to attend Groundswell Integrated Voter Engagement Program, 2016. Item 38, a resolution approving the following, Mr. Counsel, Connie Horn, Record Management Travel, City Counsel, Atlanta, Georgia, $756.53 February 16th through the 20th, 2016, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Courtney Hunter, Committee Assistant City Counsel, Montgomery, Alabama, $702.09 February 23rd through the 25th, 2016, to attend, 2016. February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend two thousand and sixteen Legislative Session. Courtney Hunter, Committee Assistant City Council Montgomery, Alabama, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, March the first through the third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend two thousand and sixteen Legislative Session. Courtney Hunter, Committee Assistant City Council Montgomery, Alabama, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, March the eighth through the tenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend two thousand and sixteen Legislative Session. Cheryl Kidd, Council Administrator, City Council, Tyson Corner, Virginia, three thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents, November fifteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Management Concepts. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington DC, one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nine cents, February eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend UNEESCO, ICO, and OS World Heritage Meeting. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington District Columbia, one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven, twenty cents, March the first through the third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend meeting for Congressional Meeting. William Parker, Councilor, City Council Atlanta, Georgia, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents, November the ninth and the tenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Meeting. James Roberson, Councilor, City Council Nashville, Tennessee, one thousand four hundred and four dollars and ninety-six cents, November the third through the sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend two thousand and fifteen National League of Cities Congress Cities. James Roberson, Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand two hundred and, two hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents, December the fifteenth and the sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Congressional Meeting. James Roberson, Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand two hundred seven dollars and forty-five cents, January thirty-first through February the second, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Congressional Meeting. And I don't, oh, I'm sorry, Renio. No, that's not correct. Item forty. Thank you, sir. A resolution approving the following advanced, uh, expense account. Sybil Scarborough, Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office Memphis, Tennessee, one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-three cents, made the twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Neighborhoods USA Conference.
All right. We're ready to vote. We have a mover and a second? All right, uh, we have a mover and a second. We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Okay, voting should be up. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes, one no vote from Counsel Abbott. Um, call up item forty-six.
Item forty-six, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account. William Parker, Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, March the twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, through March the thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency and Congressional Meetings.
Move item as present.
We have a second. All right, Roberson Rafferty? Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk? That item fails. Next item? Ms. Clerk? Go back to item, uh, forty-three.
Item, item forty-three, a resolution setting a public hearing April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand and sixteen dash one, to change zone district boundaries from R three, single-family district, to B one, neighborhood business district filed by James Parsons, representing the owner of Birmingham Water Works for the property located at twenty-one hundred twenty-sixth Avenue South, situated in northeast corridor section seven, township eighteen, south to west Birmingham.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
All right. Ready to vote?
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item?
She be item forty-four. A resolution setting a public hearing April the nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand and sixteen dash two, to change zone district boundaries from R seven, multiple dwelling district, to B one, neighborhood business district, filed by Stanley Bailey, representing the owner of Brook Hills Condominiums, for property located at twenty-three fifty Montavello Road, situated in southwest corridor section eight, township eighteen, south to west Birmingham.
Move the item?
Second.
Roberson Abbott? Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk?
Okay. I think Counselmember Abbott. All right, that vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item?
Mayor's report. Mayor's report.
Oh, we have an addendum. Let's do that.
Well, we didn't type one up, so it'll be UC?
Yeah.
Want me to read it? Want me to read it? Uh, being resolved by the council of the city of Birmingham that the employee advancing counsel the following be and the same is hereby approved for payment. James Roberson, Council Pro Tem, City Council Houston, Texas, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, March the thirty-first through April the fifth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend meeting City of Houston Utilities Regulations. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that's for UC, now I need the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That passes. All right. That concludes our council agenda. Mayor's report, Mr. Patton?
Good morning, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, of course, you know, this is still spring break week and we are just excited about it. We're asking that you be aware of the fact that last week we announced that two students were being, were given, two students each are given free admission to the following McQuain Center, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, Vulcan Park, the museum, and the Birmingham Zoo. That's all this week. Those coupons were given out last week at the respective schools. Uh, the White House internship, uh, this is the last year the White internship will be under the Obama administration. Application deadline for fall internship is April seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. For information, students can visit www dot whitehouse dot gov slash about slash internship. We have, uh, Robert Young here, who's with the Boy Scouts of America, who wants to make a brief presentation. Recognizing his, uh, little troopers.
Good morning, my name is Robert Young Junior. Uh, my address is one oh nine Pretoria Circle, Birmingham, Alabama. I am a district executive for the Boy Scouts of America. Uh, on, on March eighteenth of this, uh, couple of weeks ago, we had our annual American Values Luncheon, where we recognized the mayor and, uh, Councilman Roberson was also present there. And we wanted to take just a few minutes to thank the mayor and the council for some of the things that they've done for us. Uh, we actually have several projects, uh, lined up in different areas. Uh, for Council, for Councilman Tyson, we have something on board in your area that we can't really talk about right now. But, but, uh, we want to, uh, make sure that you're aware of it. Uh, this summer, we'll be doing our summer day camp at, uh, at Mount Ru, at, at Ruffler Mountain, which is in Councilman Rafferty's, Rafferty's district. Uh, we've got something working over in Red Mountain Park, uh, Councilman Roberson. So, we've got something going on over there. And we're looking at doing things, uh, out in Pratt City and a few other areas. We just haven't been able to get everything lined up. Now, the group you see behind me, these, these are from Bush Hills Elementary School. And this is Mr. Lester Montgomery, who's been that, been the leader over there. And one of the young men here worked us, is from Lewis Elementary School. Uh, now, Mr. Montgomery is one of these dedicated, I mean, he's one of these hard, dedicated leaders that we've had over a few years. And even people who are familiar with scouts for years, uh, whenever we go, go somewhere, they ask us, "Mr. Montgomery is still working with us?" And I have to tell him, "Yes," and he's still, he's still doing a great job with these young men. Um, a couple, a couple of other things we just want to make, make you all aware of. And you all, each one of you will be getting an invitation to our Blue and Gold Banquet in a couple of weeks over at Sixth Avenue. Uh, once again, we also want to thank, uh, your police and fire department for what they do with us, uh, for their, with their explorer programs. Uh, Chief Ro, uh, Chief Roper and, uh, Chief Gordon do a great job with that. And what that does, because we talk about a lot of problems in our community, what that does with those two programs is exposure. And they can tell you the stories about some of the kids that they've had come in through those two programs, that once they've got exposed to what they actually do, the attitudes change. And that's the same thing with the Boy Scouts we have here. Uh, we try to expose them to different things. We're also working with Lawson State to expose them to different things, different things in the trade areas, such as welding, plumbing. So, they'll have an idea of whether or not they want to do some things. Not only that, but that gives them, gives Lawson State public relations, so kids may want to look at doing that. So, our whole goal here is to thank each and every one of you on the council and thank the city for everything that you've done, for making things available to us. We will still be coming to you to ask you for, for assistance. It's not, it's not always financial, so I want to make sure you always understand that. It's always just, uh, being available and giving us access. On our Blue and Gold Banquet on April seventh, uh, Commissioner Bowman is going to be our guest speaker for that. And we just want to get you there. So, thank you, and we just want to let you see everybody and say thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Pat?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm glad you could bring these young men here on their spring break, on a trip, uh, to City Hall. Uh, can they introduce themselves real quick? And they all go to, uh, Bush?
My name is LC Davidson. My school is Bush Hills Academy and, uh...
My name is Cameron, I'm from Bush Hills Academy and I'm ten.
All right.
My name is Jackson West and I'm from Bush Hills Academy.
My name is Matthew, I'm from Bush Hills Academy and I'm seven years old and I'm in second grade.
My name Raheem, I'm from Lewis and I'm ten.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Can you please introduce yourself to the council?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lester C. Montgomery. I'm the Scout Master of Bush Hills Academy. I've been doing over thirty or forty years.
Wow.
I love boys.
That's great.
I do a goddamn me do. I thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, for your, your leadership as Scout Master. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Young. I know you work in the, the corporate office of Boy Scouts of America and, and, uh, we appreciate your leadership. I can actually throw a rock from my house to Mr. Young's house and hit his rooftop. But, uh, he is a neighbor and, uh, the work that you've done throughout the years has been tremendous with, uh, the Boy Scouts and Sixth Avenue and other, uh, Boy Scout troops throughout the city. So, I just want to thank you for your leadership and what you do. And, and we need to take these young men over to Red Mountain Park. You said that's on your list, but I want them to see those goats, uh, out there. That's, that's, that is exciting to see what the work that those goats are doing, uh, out there at Red Mountain Park. And, uh, it's just a smart way to get rid of, uh, kudzu and other items out there. So, but thank you, sir, and thank you, Ms. Pat, for bringing the Boy Scouts to us, uh, today.
I wanted to, uh, say that, uh, we would love for y'all to come over to Chapter Four, for, over on Second Avenue with the disabled veterans. We have a great program over there. They would love to have y'all just to, you know, you want to do any type of program, uh, it would be available, uh, for you, you know, free, free, everything. We have a beautiful back and, uh, and in the burning flag program that we have, we, uh, dispose of flags. They would, we would love to have them to participate in that program. I think it would be a great experience for them.
Where is that again?
It's, uh, on Second Avenue. I will actually call you and give you all the information and you can talk to our captain.
Thank you, Robert. The last thing, Mr. Chairman, we've got, uh, the Mayor's Health Walk coming up this Thursday. It's going to be at George Ward Park. We have one of the young sprinters that's here this morning, Ms. Gloria Randolph. Would you like to come forward, Ms. Randolph?
I don't know how much sprinting I do, but, uh, I am familiar, our, the walk is tomorrow, suppose, Thursday.
Thursday.
Uh, supposedly it's supposed to rain, so we, uh, will we walk in the rain?
Uh, rain doesn't stop a real walker.
Will it stop the mayor? Will he be there?
Rain doesn't stop a real walker.
Okay. Well, my familiarity with, uh, George Ward Park, as it's now called, we used to call it Green Springs Park, is that it's a great park, it has, um, a stream that runs through it. We used to go down there and, uh, catch tadpoles. But, uh, the other thing is it's a great place to walk. It's well-lighted and, uh, it's, uh, open area. And there's, we would invite not just, uh, the, our community to come and walk at, at George Ward Park. We would invite the city to come. You know, a lot of people, uh, walk at Railroad Park, but we're not that far away. So, uh, come and join us, you and the council. And Ms. Tyson and Valerie, I know, will be there. And then, uh, anybody else, we'd love to have you. And walking is the best thing for your health. Bye-bye.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I thank Gloria Randolph for coming this morning because we, we asked for people, everybody had to work today and no one could come to the council meeting. But she's retired and does enormous amounts of volunteer work at Ramsey High School. She's like the queen of Ramsey and, uh, is the biggest cheerleader they've got. So, she came to cheerlead for the Mayor's Healthy Walk, but she really is interested in the kids at Ramsey. And every time I go over there, she's already there. So, I think she maybe just lives, lives in some vacant room and, and doesn't tell anybody. But anyway, I thank her for coming this morning. And I hope everybody shows up for the Mayor's Healthy Walk at seven AM. I told some people that were having health problems that they didn't have to walk, they just needed to show up. Um, because there have been a few people on crutches and things who haven't been able to walk, but they come anyway to show their support, so I hope that everybody can do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers.
So, move?
I'm saying aye.
All right.
All opposed?
First speaker?
Anita Bolden.
Ms. Bolden? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Anita Bolden. I live at thirty-one Twenty-One Avenue. I, I've been coming here for over a year, trying to get the water stopped and the flood stopped coming in my yard. It was some pipes laid. At first I thought it was my, the street was just high. I kind of found out my property was sinking. And I have talked to different ones here, including mayor, Mr. John Colan, Mr. Pen, the mayor, I've talked to everyone. I applaud them on, on solving the, uh, the flood in, in a hundred and sixty days. But my property was damaged. My yard is damaged. My, um, foundation is damaged. And so, it does me any good because in that, you help my neighbors. They don't have to move, but I'm sitting on water. When a truck go by, my house shake. So, it didn't do me any good. And then I was, Mr. Colan, the mayor, and Mr. Stone, they called me over the last time I was here. They gonna, they gonna fix the damage, uh, give me relocation. I have talked to Mr. Colan, I talked to Mr. Patton about being relocated. I talked to Miss Burns, they said they ain't gonna do anything for me. That's not fair. I can't damage the city property and get away with it. The city shouldn't be able to damage my property and get away with it. That's all I have. So, it shouldn't be done. So, what would y'all do if it was yours? I would be jailed if I did something to the city property and it had to be made to pay for it. So, what should the city be done for mine? Tell me, somebody. I'm asking. This is supposed to be justice and I'm getting on. Y'all say prayer, but I feel no compassion coming from here.
Go ahead, Counsel Tyson.
What can we do, uh, Mr. Patton?
If I recall correctly, I thought I saw a document last week that was sent to you, ma'am, by Ms. Teresa Barnes. Is that not true?
Yes, y'all said that y'all gonna fix, gonna do drains and things, but the property had already been damaged. It helped the neighbors to keep from y'all buying their property, uh, further damage had been done. But all the water and stuff came on to mines. And it wasn't, as they say, it ain't nothing but a church in my property, but it's mines.
Okay, let me suggest that you meet with me, Ms.
Okay, let me suggest that you meet with me, Ms. Barnes, one more time, along with, uh, Mr. John Cologne and someone from the legal department. Let me suggest that we meet one more time.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Next speaker. Okay, uh, Jack, Jackie Smithman? Smithman? Jackie Smithman? Jock? Jock Smithman? Alright, next speaker. Jonathan Falmer. Jonathan Falmer.
I know Mr. Casey's right there, W.A. Casey.
W.A. Casey. Mr. Casey, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Willie Casey, Box Five Thirty-four, Birmingham Three Five Two Oh One. Ms. Tyson, I apologize, I just, you see this here, just wanted to pass it to you. I'm the Deputy Supreme Grand Chancellor for the State of Alabama, a Knights of Pithias, Friendship Charity in the Netherlands. By the way, this is my dermatologist did this to me here, Dr. Dr. Newman Walton, I hope he heal up. So I really didn't want to come up this morning, but I want to thank y'all, listen to me the last time. I don't know what's been done with the cemetery since that time. But we want to create a partnership, a public nonprofit and profit foundation to manage the cemetery that started before nineteen thirty-two. You see, Dave Brown was born August the fourteenth, eighteen eighty-eight, and died August the nineteenth, nineteen thirty-six. He was the president of the Burial Society, which consisted of churches, funeral homes, cemetery owners, under the banner of the Knights of Pithias. So I would like for us to create a new organization, compile churches, funeral homes, and cemeteries. We need pre-layers and pastors to get involved, because it's a shame where that cemetery looks out there. And the second thing I would like to ask is, will someone from the Mayor's Office or the President of the City Council tell the stakeholders what the meaning of Civil Rights Park is, the Federal Civil Rights Park, to be placed in the Civil Rights District? And what we can and cannot do with that property down there. I know that Congress and Terry Sura wants to do something for her district, but I think she should talk to the stakeholders in the proposed Civil Rights Federal Park District before she makes the bill of law. Sixteenth Street Baptist Church, that told the former mayor, Mayor Richard Arrington, that we do not want to be part of the Civil Rights Institute. We like to know, one, we like to know, number one, is to talk to someone about the pros and the cons of this program. And, uh, I think we, also, we need, we talking about honoring, uh, A.G. Gaston. I think there's other people that may be a little more worthy than him. For one, Dr. Reverend William Pittifor, which founded Sixteenth Baptist Church, the Pentagon Savings Building, Pentagon Savings Bank, under the Freedom Bank. Also, the former Oscar Adams Senior, which was Supreme Chancellor of Knights of Pithias of State of Alabama, which encompassed the burial policy. He's in that cemetery. But I think, uh, if y'all saw the movie, uh, Matt, if A.G. Gaston played that movie, he'd be goalie. I mean, shocky. I think y'all know what I'm talking about. If you don't, I'm afraid we have a further discussion on that, a private discussion, because I want to talk about people's personalities and character.
You wrap it up, Mr. Casey, your time is up.
I think.
Council Tyson?
Yes, um, this is in my district. It's a nonprofit has already been set up. Two thousand and thirteen, the city gave them, uh, maybe fifty thousand dollars. That's where the fence and the wrought iron opening, uh, came in. They put it up with that. They also secured all of the property and they put the, uh, barriers and the bars up at, at, on both locations of the cemetery. After they did all of that, the money ran out. Now, they have someone, uh, Demetrius Jackson, which has been cutting the property. But what, what's happening, he's been just cutting it and also been keeping a bill of, you know, how much he's been charging the cut, which he's never gotten any money for it. It's the, it's a, it's the flooding actually that is really damaging the cemeteries. And I wish we could find somewhere in the budget that they would get money every year. And this, and, and some rules and regulations have, need to be set up, because I have, uh, a person that write grants for cemetery, historical cemeteries. She would actually be getting in contact with y'all. She just contacted me last night and she would be willing to volunteer to help. But, uh, it need to be some funding put in place for these two cemeteries. We have, uh, Condoleezza Rice and, uh, President Obama's, uh, First Lady, uh, family buried out here. And if you go out there, it's very historical and I totally agree with you. And it's some more money need to be put into this cemetery where it can actually be kept up. Because it's gonna be, it's, it's really in bad shape, but it's gonna really be a disaster if we do not get any, any type of relief for this problem. And they have been coming up here for I don't know how long about this. And they do a mil, they do a little ceremony every year, uh, for Veterans Day out there for, uh, it's a, it's a lot of veterans out there. So, uh, Mr. Patton, if we could find some type of way, I think we, we do take care of some cemeteries. I know we give some money to...
City owns.
The city owns, but even if the city don't own this, it, something need to be done. It, it doesn't make any difference skeletons, uh, floating around in the street. Whether they own it or not, it need, it's something need to be done about this, because you can see the open castes and the open graves. And that's what's gonna happen if we continue to let this happen. You, you, it's, you know, bodies are gonna be coming up out of the water and in the streets. I have to drive through there and we have citizens still live in that area. But, but to let this sit here like this and ignore it and throw pennies at it, and, and, and the city could get someone to write grants, if nothing else, in order to help this situation. And I totally agree with you. And I have been talking about it, but I don't think I've been talking enough. So I think we need to, uh, to get someone out here and probably even bring national attention to this, uh, if we can't get any help with this.
Well, all the graves in Alabama like that, black graves.
I know.
Especially in nineteen thirty-two when, oh, burial of someone was taught to people. It wasn't out of slavery, cruel thing of it, that back in slavery, he was a Negro, he threw in the hog pen. So we had to teach them how to bury, this Christian thing. And for the churches, I think the churches, the preachers, and they would have a direct responsibility to keep our cemeteries up. But it needs a law we pass, because in, out there, it makes sense. My mother, my mother, my daddy's second wife, and all this, they built so close together and all the graves that fell in. We can't remodel our graves, because we don't know who owns, I know there's some Browns in this grave over here.
And I know it's a mass burial out there too, where they, they had about sixteen slaves they buried out there.
Alright.
And I don't even think, they are in castes.
A lot of you is colorful.
Thank you, Mr. Casey, hold, hold on, your time is up. Ms. Protem? Real quick, uh, Council Tyson, you probably already know this, but the under Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, uh, the years ago, there was the Cemeteries Advisory Committee. This is back in the nineties. And that's probably a way that we can address some of this, if you want to, uh, resurrect this cemetery advisory board of people and, and terms ended. Uh, it never really got any life back into it. But this is some way that you can actually put, maybe address some of those issues you are raising today and, uh, maybe take some things to the state.
Yes, Ms. Love said that she would come, I'm, I'm gonna meet with her when she, uh, get back from out of town. And she's gonna help me get that, um, together.
Okay, great.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Casey.
Uh, next speaker, Mr. Minor, Randall Minor. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. We get it, Mr. Casey, your time is up. Mr. Minor, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Randall Minor, Maynard Cooper, Nineteen Oh One, Sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. I think I most, I know most of you guys. I'm here, uh, uh, as local counsel to Ascension Health Alliance. They're the owner or operator of a couple of Saint Vincent Hospitals in the city of Birmingham. Um, our client has petitioned Alabama Special Care Facilities Financing Authority to issue bonds in the amount of up to a hundred twenty million dollars. Uh, we've, uh, this is, falls under the Public Safety Committee, so we, we've met with, uh, Council Hoyt and talked to him a couple of times about this. Uh, nor, the federal tax laws require when we, when we issue these bonds for a public hearing to be held. And so what we did, because the enabling legislation for that authority says that the council has to approve the bonds before they're issued, I wanted you guys to have the opportunity to have that public hearing. In the public hearing, we, we normally would have it somewhere at City Hall. We usually do it in the Law Department or, or somewhere else in City Hall. But it, but again, because the, the council has to approve the issues of the bonds beforehand, I wanted you to have that opportunity. Uh, we published the notice, and like I said, it's a federal requirement, Birmingham News on March thirteenth. And it specified, it laid out exactly what, what we're doing. There's, again, two hospitals, uh, two campuses, uh, the one that everybody knows in, in South Side. Uh, the, the proposal is to issue up to a hundred ten million dollars for that. And that is over a course of time, you know, it's not all to be spent to, you know, today or tomorrow or anything of that nature. And then Saint Vincent's Medical Center East, uh, which is in the Huffman area, um, there would be ten million dollars of that used for, for, for that issuer. Again, this will be before the council, again, hopefully, uh, next Tuesday for formal approval. But we wanted to have the public hearing today and we, we caused that to be public. So I'm just here to announce that. And if you guys have questions, you know how to reach me, uh, before next Tuesday. And I'm happy to answer your questions today if there are questions today.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers. Uh, we down to older new business, Council Tyson.
Thank you, President. April the fourth, Piling will be meeting at four PM at the Henry Crumpum Recreation Center. Uh, our next PIC meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, April the twelfth, at two PM, Conference Room A. Eighteen-wheelers are still, is still speeding on, uh, Green Springs Avenue. They have, I seen several polices out there, uh, in the morning, but, uh, Police Chief, uh, Mr. Patton, if we can try, try to get someone out there at least three times a, a day to, uh, stop the trucks from coming down, uh, Green Springs Avenue. There's a, uh, ditch that needs cleaning near twenty, twenty-two Oh One, Twenty-Second Street Southwest. Also, it's a ditch on Steiner Avenue Southwest in the bend, uh, right before you go over, uh, the railroad tracks. It's a, it's right behind some apartments. And it's flooding over there when it rains really, really bad. It's coming off of Pearson Avenue, Steiner, it's a ditch right there behind those apartment in, in that little empty, uh, little garage. And it's full of trash and whatever else bagging up out of it. Um, people are dumping on Fourteenth Street and off of Goldwire. The neighborhoods, uh, the neighbors are complaining about that. We was at the neighborhood meeting, went by there. You can actually tell that it was someone that, uh, that has a rental house, because it's mattresses, toys, sofas, everything. Where they have actually brought their furniture and took it and dumped it over there, because within that block, the, the, uh, two or three blocks, there are no vacant houses and no one have moved out from over there in a while. Those residents have, uh, are longtime residents, so someone had to bring that furniture from somewhere else. And they are senior citizens and they, they weren't, they were not able to actually get the people tags that was actually doing the dumping. The, uh, there are trucks and, and, and the trucks are dropping their trailers and also, uh, staying overnight at Harvester Center on the, um, the far end, like over there by McDonald's. If you go over there, you'll see about any time of day, six or seven trucks just parked and I don't know what they sleeping or whatever. But the neighborhood is, has, uh, called me several times about that. But I had an opportunity to actually go this weekend and actually see it for myself. And I went yesterday and there was four trucks out there. And we want to, uh, see if we can get something done about that. Uh, at the West End Library, we will be paying, uh, we will have utility assistance from ten AM to five PM. Uh, JCCO, um, and several other agencies will be helping us pay, uh, citizens, uh, utilities. You need a, a copy of your ID, social security card, proof of income, and a lease, um, a tax statement, uh, mortgage statement, um, prove, proving that you stay in that, uh, house, that you want your assistance paid in. So we're asking for everyone to come out. It started at ten, I actually went by there at nine o'clock this morning and we had a line wrapped around the building. So we're asking for anyone who needs assistance to come out and we will get you out as soon as possible. End of my announcements.
Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Mr. Patton, I told you that I was going to remind y'all every week that Birmingham, Alabama is the sixth most dangerous city for pedestrians. Now, eventually, I know I'm gonna hear back about what y'all are gonna do about that, about enforcing our laws and making it where people don't feel free to just jaywalk right in front of a police officer who's standing there. Um, are we gonna do anything?
I will have the police chief get in touch with you personally.
Well, I think that it, I mean, I think this is a big deal. It was printed in AARP Magazine and there's a lot of us that are over fifty.
Yes, ma'am, I know.
So we all read it, that Birmingham is the sixth most dangerous city in the nation for pedestrians. That's embarrassing. I don't want to be on that list next year. So we need to do something about it. And I think the only way to get people's attention is enforcement, because clearly, they're gonna do as they darn well please anyway. And after I almost hit that guy, I'm inspired over it, because I do not want to be on the list of people who've run over a pedestrian. Yeah, city council runs over a pedestrian. You know, that's gonna look really good. So I am gonna keep reminding y'all, and I do, I will be delighted to talk to the chief, because he's the one that can make it happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Right after the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The mayor tells the chief and then the chief tells the people. And then hopefully, they don't use their discretion that they're always using to not enforce the law. Because that's the other thing we have a whole lot of in Birmingham is discretion so that the laws don't have to be enforced. So, that being said, the Mayor's Healthy Walk is this Thursday in George Ward Park, begins at seven AM. I know that's early. I'm not a morning person, but I'm gonna be there anyway. And I encourage everyone else in Birmingham to come and walk with us. We want, we have a bond issue paid for walking trail in that park. Um, and so you, you know, you won't trip and fall over a rock or anything, or a stick, hopefully. And, uh, so we want people to come out. And it, it, you know, we'll walk a mile or however long we can, we can make it. And, uh, no, I doubt there'll be all that many people running, but there may be a few runners who come and join us. So please come this Thursday, seven AM. Birmingham AIDS Outreach is having an open house tomorrow from four thirty to seven. They're located at twenty-five hundred Fourth Avenue South. Uh, Captain Jerry P. Wiley is retiring from the Police Department. He is, uh, they, they, they will have a reception for him at Vulcan Park from eleven to one on Thursday. Twenty-nine and a half years of service. Then on, on Thursday, Thursday's a really busy day. Uh, we're having, the, the council is having the Women's Month Visionary Event at Ruffner Mountain Nature Preserve. That's from six to eight. And on Friday, Highland Park Tennis Facility will be dedicated to Frank A. Wagner, the former director of the Birmingham Park and Recreation Board. And the next neighborhood meetings that will be coming up are Glen Iris Neighborhood on April fourth and Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting will be held on April fifth at the Avondale Library. And Glen Iris meets at Saint Elias Maranite Catholic Church. So, um, I hope that everybody had a wonderful Easter holiday. I know that my church service, the music was about as good as I've ever heard. And, uh, and I, I, I just, Easter was very meaningful for me this year, so I hope everybody had a good Easter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, leadership. I just want to send a special shout-out to Scotty Colson and Mark Jackson, Sister Cities, uh, as well as our own... and Mark Jackson, Sister Cities, uh, as well as our own pro tempore, uh, James J. Robeson Junior, for the efforts that they did, uh, with our delegation from the Ukraine, uh, Vinnyxia. Uh, you are looking at the newly, uh, drafted ambassador to Vinnyxia on behalf of the City Council. Uh, so I am looking forward to my pending trip to the Ukraine. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful city, uh, just southwest of Kiev City in the Ukraine. And, um, the delegation that they brought over was some of their best and brightest, uh, millennial population. And they really had a lot of questions, uh, and they are, uh, anxious to partner with us. Uh, one of the gentlemen was a Baptist minister in Vinnyxia. So I look forward to preaching in one of the churches in Vinnyxia. Uh, should really be a treat. Uh, but again, um, our Sister City program is probably second to none and Mark Jackson does a wonderful job there. And Scotty, uh, in our Economic Development Office is really a jewel to the city. Um, he is, uh, honorary counsel for, which country you remember?
All of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's got three or four of those different titles of, uh, honorary, uh, Counsel General. And that's a huge title, uh, but it shows you the outreach, uh, that he has internationally. And he is helping, uh, to make Birmingham, um, a destination throughout the world. So just really excited about that. Uh, also, Brenda Home, uh, with Brenda's, uh, Bosom Brown Buddies, Brown Bosom Buddies, um, she has one of her events coming up. If y'all will just give me a chance to work with this technology here. It's gonna be at the Pratt City Library Thursday, April fourteenth from five thirty to six thirty. And the Pratt City Library is at five oh nine Dugan Avenue. If you need more information, contact seven nine one, four nine nine seven to register and save your spot because seating is very, very limited. Uh, they're going to have hea- healthy snacks served there, but, uh, they're gonna have a moderator, uh, Vivlin Peterson, breast cancer information, healthy eating and living information, personal fitness information, personal finance information, insurance information and safety measures. Uh, this is important because Brenda's Brown Bosom Buddies works with, uh, the population that looks like us. Uh, they work with men and women and they help all folks get to and from, uh, their needed medical treatments. Uh, it's a wonderful resource in our community and, uh, I'm just proud that Brenda Home has decided to do this in the Pratt community for her reception. Uh, so that concludes my announcements, Leadership.
Council Skills.
Thank you, Ms. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. I do want to call for two resolutions of sympathy. The first is, uh, Exaviria Powell Anderson, uh, the former Miss Wheelchair Alabama, and I shall move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed.
I'm waiting on you to say pass, Ms. President. Thank you. Ms. Exaviria Powell Anderson, which I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment, uh, passed on last Tuesday. Uh, I'd also like to call for a resolution of sympathy for Leola Baker Hill, and I shall move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed.
Thank you, Ms. President. I do want to say thank you to Fire Station number twenty, uh, seven that responded. Uh, Ms. Powell Anderson actually lived in District One, got that call on my way from, uh, leaving City Hall. And I just want to say to all of the fire departments, uh, particularly Fire Station twenty-seven, this young woman was burned alive in her home. She was, uh, wheelchair bound and, um, and one of the, um, uh, staff members of the, uh, fire department was hurt in the process, but nevertheless, she will be funeralized on this Saturday. Uh, Ms. Baker Hill has already been funeralized and, uh, her transition occurred on March twentieth. I do want to thank all of the, uh, District One family and the entire community that has supported, uh, the Powell Anderson family because she has four children. She has a husband, but she has four children. And, uh, so I want to send a special thank you to Huffman High School for all of the love and support that you've shown to this family. I do believe that, uh, when our families incur anything, I think that when we are, one is happy, we're all happy. When one mourns, we all mourn. So I just wanted to say that. Also, for the mayor's office, excuse me, in the one thousand block of Shelton Street, we have, um, items that have been dumped. And just if we can pull that up, Brittany, if you're listening to me, make it, the shot a little tighter. Bring it on in. This is the kind of junk that we deal with in District One. Can you see it? Okay. I'm trying to make, I'm, I'm looking at you, Brittany. I'm trying to adjust it myself. All right. So and that's page one and then that's page two. So no need to harp it about it. We got the pictures and, excuse me, there we are from there. Also, public works in the seven hundred block of Martin Wood Lane and Martin Wood Drive need to pick up trash that I've been seeing sitting there for more than two weeks. Additional police patrol is, excuse me, being requested in the Huffman, Echo Highlands, Spring Lake and Kilo Springs Community. I do want to say this too. Forgive me for coughing. I want to thank the members of this council, those who are in support. If you're not in support, then this message is not for you. Last week, I thank, uh, the, the president for, uh, his leadership in going to the Alabama State Legislature to talk about, um, the, the importance of having a presence in regards to this waterworks that was sold in nineteen ninety-nine. We know that that is a sore spot for many of our residents because you had no voice of the people to sell it in the first place. But I do want to say, uh, publicly to the president, um, that despite some of the mean spirited things that I believe took place on last week, uh, some mischaracterizations of the truth, I can say that this council lawfully passed two ordinances that the Law Department and everyone on this dais knew about. And so with that having said, thank you, Cheryl, I, I want to say to the president, uh, I do believe that the voice of the people was heard and not because it came from the president. We recognize that everyone can travel to Montgomery. I know that there is another public hearing that is coming up. Uh, this is dealing with the Mayor Council Act and the changes, uh, that are being proposed in terms of, uh, the council and the ability for us to do our work or lack thereof. So I want the public, as always, to be, uh, more informed, know what's going on with your city government. I do believe that you should have taxation with representation. And when folk misrepresent the truth, I do believe that they should be called out. And the reason being is because it's enough of us dumbing down the citizens of Birmingham. You got to know, all of this stuff talking about hearsay, there's no such thing as hearsay. I, I will close by saying this, Mr. President. I always look at it like this. I believe in a power that's greater than myself. Therefore, I believe in God. Because I believe in God, I believe that God thought enough of me to put whatever he wanted me to know about his precious promises in the good book, as Council Abbott talked about on Sunday, uh, singing and preaching, okay? And so if he thought enough of me to put it in the Holy Scripture, then I think that if someone makes an accusation or they mischaracterize the truth, they too should provide whatever it is in writing. And the day of where citizens are being left out of the process, citizens being, uh, not informed about the things in writing, that day is over. Because there is a changing of the guard. We're gonna get some young folk involved in politics or in government, as I should say. This stuff where we hanging around here fifty years only for a title's sake, that day is over whether we want to believe it or not. And I just believe that, that times are changing and we've gotta change with the times. Part of that time being changed is the fact that people gotta get more educated. Once you're educated, I believe when you know better, you can do better. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Proteam.
Uh, thank you, Ms. President. I hope, uh, each council member and families and those viewing this today had a blessed Easter. I would advise that, uh, you do not hide seventy eggs inside your house. Um, as my sister did that and, uh, we had, uh, due to inclement weather, the weather was pretty bad and, uh, uh, they had a count and, uh, at the end and my nephew Thompson got the golden egg. Uh, it was hid by the bathroom toilet. And, uh, he received a ten dollar cash from his grandfather, James Robeson Senior. So I just, uh, uh, we had a good Easter, good fellowship with family and friends, and I hope it was a, a blessing to each and every one of you all. Uh, I do want to commend the, uh, leadership of our mayor, uh, and also Congresswoman Sewell. Uh, on last week, as you know, we, uh, we're in Washington, D. C. at the National Press Club, uh, and, uh, a bill that had bipartisanship. It's interesting that she said it was bipartisan because he's the only, uh, congress, congressional member that's a Democrat, uh, and the others are all Republican, but, uh, they supported the bill in the House, uh, to help assist with the, uh, federal designation of the Civil Rights District as a national park. So, uh, that's step one. Uh, it was a great, uh, event, great leadership. Uh, my colleague, Council Parker, was there, uh, but it was good to see the support from the National Park Service Commission and those that were in attendance. Uh, even our director, the Civil Rights Museum was there and others were present to help support tha- that day. So, uh, that was good news for Birmingham and, uh, that will give a lot of support, uh, hopefully the next couple of years once we get the official designation. Uh, it is spring break and, um, there are a lot of youth that are out there doing a lot of different things, but I want to offer some other options for parents that are tuning in. Uh, there's a youth martial arts training program we have here in the city for ages eight to sixteen years old, uh, for boys and girls, if they're interested in martial arts. Uh, this is a free program. Uh, you can call my office for more information. Uh, there's, uh, another Model Man Curriculum Program that's offered, Seven Keys to Success Program and a Wise Woman Counseling Ministry that, uh, these are opportunities for youth in our community. And, uh, our office has a flyer with more information if you'd like to contact my office. Uh, on Saturday, April ninth, uh, the Garden Highlands will have a cleanup day. Uh, we look forward to everyone coming out at nine o'clock A. M. on Saturday, April the ninth at nine A. M. Uh, we look forward to, uh, cleaning up Garden Highlands in our community and, uh, investing pride back into our community with that cleanup day. I want to thank the Neighborhood Association for their leadership there. And then on, uh, this Friday, April first, uh, we have our neighborhood meeting with Jones Valley at four o'clock. On Monday, April fourth, Powley will meet at Ford Henry Crumpton. Rosella Heights will meet at six o'clock at Lawson State. And Jermaine Park, uh, will meet at seven o'clock, I'm sorry, that's West Goldwire, that's a correction, will meet at seven o'clock at Lawson State. Uh, that concludes my announcements, Mr. Pres- Oh, one more thing. Uh, yeah, congratulations to Council Lundey, uh, being recruited as the ambassador for, uh, Vinnyxia, Ukraine. And I can't wait to hear a sermon, uh, speaking in that foreign language. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Clerk, I just wanted to mention, you did get the minutes, the council did, on January the twelfth minutes. There was an ordinance dealing with the small business licenses, the twenty-five dollars that we passed. Everyone got a copy of it. It was just a mix-up in the, um, actual original ordinance that was put before the council and the committee. We didn't put it in your packet, but that actual ordinance that's in your minutes is the true copy of the one that was placed before you in the committee by Attorney Lawson. We just want to make sure you're aware of that, the minutes that were passed. It was for the twenty-five dollar small business N. A. I. C. S. code.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Council Rafferty, did you have any announcements? Okay. All right. Uh, I want to thank every, or let me see, no. College Hills meets Monday, April fourth from six to seven at J. C. C. O. Forest Park South Avondale meets Tuesday, April fifth from six thirty to seven thirty at the Avondale Library. Eastlake meets Tuesday, April fifth from seven to eight at the Household Faith of Church. I do want to wish everyone a happy Easter. And, uh, Council, I will be sending out an, uh, email to each one of you to inform you about the meeting that will take place on August, uh, April the fourth at the County Courthouse. I think it's at six P. M. to discuss the changes to the Mayor Council Act. Um, that is a public hearing that, that is, that will, um, take place on next Monday, April the fourth at six P. M. at the County Courthouse. Um, it's currently being advertised in the Messenger and in our, in Birmingham News. Um, so there, yeah, there are two other ones, but this is one that we'll be discussing. And I'll make sure that you're informed about all of the changes that are being proposed.
No, Council President, there's two versions of the Mayor Council Act bill. Just make sure that you're aware of the differences between the two.
Thank you. Um, all right. I do also want to thank Officer Lewis and Officer Lofton for providing our security today. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
This meeting is adjourned.